Good afternoon. This Board of Trustees' regular meeting is now called to order at 4:31 PM. We welcome members of the public here in person and online. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item 1 of the agenda, and we will ask each item if there is public comment. Catherine, will you please do roll call?
Yes. Student trustee Alejandro Martinez.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Trustee Kishinov.
Here.
I don't see trustee Baker. Where are we? And trustee Dodd.
And I don't see Deluna either.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I haven't heard from either of them. So hopefully, they will be joining us soon. But we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pride of the United States of America. One nation under God.
We will move to adoption of the agenda. I have a minor change. But do any other trustees have any changes or comments? What I'd like to do is move Items 10.1 and 10.2, the District and Classified Professional Reopeners to Arkansas and Calendar, and make that a practice moving forward as well. Just in my past time, I've never had any public comment on it, never had any board discussion on it. And so we can move it and always move it back to a discussion item if needs like. Moving forward, if any member of the public or trustee wants to do in the future. But not seeing any objections to, oh, and Catherine?
You're also removing Item 5.1 from the closed session.
I am. I'm also moving Item 5.1 from the closed session. So we will be removing that conference with legal counsel when I see a well-written post-it note right in front of my face saying that. So.
Chair Dodd. Is this an appropriate time to ask for 8.8 to be pulled from the consent calendar? I have further questions on that.
8.8? So what we would do is we'll pull it from consent. We'll move it to a regular discussion item.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so we will pull Item. Trustee pin here. And we will move it as immediately after our consent calendar. Okay. All right, thank you, trustee Kishinov. Any other changes? Seeing none, we'll adopt the agenda as modified by consensus. And we will move on to a resolution honoring Napa Valley classified professionals who have reached 15 years of service. Ms. Albright.
This is a privilege and a joy. You know, reflecting 15 years, 15 years ago, Barack Obama was elected president. 15 years ago, we got the privilege of watching our first Iron Man movie. 15 years ago, Lady Gaga debuted her first album. And here's something else. 15 years ago, a dozen of eggs was a dollar and 99 cents. And here in California, gas, a gallon of gas, was $3.29. And 15 years ago, Napa Valley College was blessed with some exceptional talent. As you see on the screen, Dwayne Almeida, who's our senior building mechanic and project coordinator from facilities, Georgina Cota, who's a counseling services specialist in counseling, Twila Gray, accounting specialist, business and finance, Marlene Holden, who is in the audience, financial aid specialist, financial aid, EOPS, Jacqueline Limiteko, business office assist, business and finance, Mark Osteen, our company's arts and humanities, and Michael Ronald Bellou from our PE and athletic equipment attendant from kinesiology, athletics, and dance. Every single one of these individuals have brought so much to Napa Valley College as they continue to serve our students and serve our students well. I want to personally thank all of our classified professionals for their excellent service to Napa Valley College. Thank you.
And we have a well-written resolution in front of the board this afternoon, expressing the district's thanks and compliments and gratitude to our classified professionals who really make this college work. And so with that, I would welcome a motion for approval of this resolution.
Move to approve.
Thank you, trustee Olson and trustee Rios for the second. All in favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for being here too, both of you. Wonderful to see you. We will now move to a public comment on our closed session items, devoting up to 15 minutes where individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment on closed session items?
No. Hold on a sec. No, I have received no public comment.
Okay. So at this time, the board will move into closed session covering a public employee, a public employment conference with labor negotiators and public employee performance evaluation. We're going to be returning a little bit later, returning at approximately 6:15 PM. Thank you. Good evening. We, the board is returning from closed session at approximately 6:20 PM. We do have one announcement from closed session where the board approved the following full-time classified administrative assignment. Wendy Nuko as controller, starting April 21, 2023. Controller's salary will be based on administrative confidential salary schedule range 19. Step C, Ms. Nuko will also receive a monthly stipend of 5% of administrative confidential salary schedule range 19. Step C for retaining senior manager accounting duties. Salary and stipend will be prorated for any partial month of service. We'll move on to public comment, which is an opportunity governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. Under the Brown Act, the board is not able to engage in any level of conversation or discussion. But we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. The board will devote up to 15 minutes to hear comment regarding any subject that is not appearing on tonight's agenda for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur upon any sort of, upon any public comment, and each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. I have not received any public comment either. And right before, let's see, let's go through consent first, and then we will go to remove consent calendar item 8.8, California Psych Tech apprenticeship agreement. Can I have a motion approved consent, please? Thank you, trustee Iverson.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Kishinov. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, consent is approved. And except for 8.8, which we will look to Dr. Mora.
Thank you, trustee Dodd. We have Dr. Mora, who is prepared to speak on consent item 8.8.
Yeah, so just a little more information about this item. The funding source for this is a little different than for our other programs. So the state has long wanted to invest in apprenticeship training as one of the core things that community colleges can offer. And there are funds set aside per education code for this type of apprenticeship. So one thing that might not be apparent from the terms that you see here is that we are not outlaying the 50%. What we are doing is taking the funds that we receive from the state and distributing 50% of those funds to the hospital for the services they provide. And the portion that we retain covers the costs of the program coordinator who oversees the program and support services those students might receive. And I did also want to mention that, you know, this item has a bit of a delay in the payment. I think I want to commend VP Reeves and his office for going through and finding that there was a gap in our payment. But we had already received, the funds hadn't paid them out yet. So we're really just meeting what we needed to meet previously.
Thank you, Dr. Mora. Trustee Kishinov, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, thank you for your explanation. And I'm glad that that's coming out of a state fund, especially for apprenticeships. I just, I was curious about it because like it would be weird if we were paying McDonald's to train their fry cooks. And so it's weird, it seems weird to me that we're paying the state hospital to train the people that are going to work there instead of them paying us because it seems like we're providing them the service. So, but you know, things work out funny with government institutions. So I was just curious for a better explanation there.
Yes, absolutely. So I think a different way to think about that is that the state is invested in providing workplace training opportunities for our students. And so the state is paying, we're not paying. The state is paying us to provide the oversight, the curriculum, and ensure that the outcomes are met. And then the state is paying the hospital to ensure that the hands-on training is occurring under practicing practitioners who can provide that real lived experience of what it is like to work in those settings. So we, again, we are not paying, the state is paying. We are each receiving support for providing the opportunity to students. And I do want to mention, you know, this is an incredible program. It's a one-of-a-kind in the state, as I have recently learned. And the pass rate for the psych tech exam that they complete of 95% is really, really high. So this, the outcomes here are amazing. We have qualified practitioners who are ready to work in this hospital or in the larger community. We have students completing their program of study that we're able to award certificate to. And we also have our partner, our hospital partners, who are receiving the benefit of providing and getting more advanced training for their students. So I, I don't see it as someone's giving to someone else, but rather we're all getting something, and it's a very positive gain.
Yeah, I recognize that it's a popular and a great program, and I don't mean to attack the program. I was just curious about that. And I'm glad that the college isn't paying for it. And yet, as a constituent of the state, I'm still wondering why the taxpayers are paying the state hospital to train their employees for it instead of the state hospital pay for it. But that's a matter for the state at the state level. So thank you for your explanation.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? Catherine, any public comment on this item?
I see no public comment.
Thank you. I would welcome a motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Deluna and trustee Baker for your second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Approved unanimously. We will go on to what I think is the highlight for this evening. Jessica, I'm looking at you. We're having a discussion and an action item tonight on the Wine Hospitality Training Center update and naming opportunities. And I believe we also have Dean Marriott here as well via Zoom.
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Dr. Powell and trustees. Happy to be here tonight, talking to you about the Wine Education Center again. It's been a long journey, so I know you've heard me talk on several occasions. But we're finally at a moment where we're going to be breaking ground on the first portion of it. So I wanted to provide an update and let you know about some of the naming opportunities. We're hoping to get approval on so we can move forward with approaching donors for donations. So the picture that you see right here is a final drawing of what the facility will look like. You know, the goal is to build a world-class facility that will bring the community and students and industry partners around a facility that will offer classrooms and also a hospitality training center lab for students. So on the left, you can see is the classroom portion of the project. It includes a sensory classroom and then also a lab classroom. And on the right, you can see is the Hospitality Training Center. And that's the portion that we're fundraising for. Let's do the next slide. So this is just a brief update and description of the first phase. Keep in mind, this has already been funded by the Wine Spectator Scholarship Foundation. So this facility is about 7,000 square feet, and it has three classrooms total. One is the lab classroom with 24 lab stations. So it's additional stations to what is currently had in the Trefethan Lab. And then the sensory classroom is two 40-seat classrooms with a movable partition wall. So it can also be one large classroom. It also has offices and prep rooms and, of course, restrooms. Next slide. So Phase 2 is the fundraising campaign we're about to embark on. And this is the Hospitality and Sales Training Center. It has an indoor and outdoor space, really tailored so students and members of the community can gather to learn about wine, take classes, and participate in hospitality and sales types trainings with industry partners. Next slide. So the capital campaign that we're going to launch for $4 million, we have various donors targeted that we want to ask for some of the larger naming rights. That would include naming on the front of the building, inside the building. But before we approach them, we want to make sure that we have trustee approval on those levels. So this is the outside of the Hospitality Sales Training Center. So you can see that exterior opportunity. Next slide. And then I'm going to let Dr. Marriott talk a little bit about the centralized industry and educational focus and really the heart of what this facility will be doing in terms of our programs.
Thank you, Jess, Jessica. Good evening. Board of Trustees, President Powell. This is very timely. We had on April 18th, Napa County Workforce Summit that cited the great need in these industries and how our winery and technology program is aligned with hospitality, tourism, and culinary training. This space will help merge those programs and offer, just as our bonded winery is a laboratory for wine making and our five-acre vineyard is a laboratory for viticulture, this would be a laboratory for wine marketing, hospitality, and sales. Our HCTM program increased 45% between the academic year of 2020, 2021, and 21, 22. And I'm grateful for the faculty and the teams that work on expanding those programs. There's been a greater overlap with faculty who teach in the viticulture program and who teach in the culinary program. Our HCTM 250 class, which is an 11-unit culinary academy taking place at Upper Valley, will be serving Napa Valley College estate wine at their restaurant experience coming up. So this is a natural alignment. I'm really grateful for the work of the foundation. It's exciting to talk about and very timely. Next slide, please.
Yeah, next slide. Thank you.
So as the bullets share here, it'll, we hope to continue the strategy of working with students who are already working and offer classes that are accessible for them, whether they're at night in hybrid fashion or on weekends, so that they can continue. Many parts of the viticulture program have gone to a distance ed model, but people still come in for hands-on training in the winery and in the vineyard. This would help with wine marketing. It would be a great place to show and focus on short-term training for people to enter into both of these fields. It'd be a great place to co-host events. Right now, we're going to host the Hospitality Industry Partnership, which is a group of industry partners. They'll be in the AgLab this coming Tuesday. And we'll give them a tour of the winery and show them. This space then will take the place of the AgLab, which has a lot of history, but it'll provide kind of state-of-the-art, modern training spaces that'll match the industry that we're serving and training towards. There's many adjacencies with this program. I think I've shared at a, it might have been a VWT board meeting, but an outcome of an advisory board with the VWT program was the grape growers requested customized training in welding for workers in the vineyard. So I see this space as an opportunity to highlight our art programs, our culinary programs, and a lot of overlap with what we get to do at Napa Valley College.
Thank you, Dr. Marriott. And just to piggyback a little bit on what he was saying, we've had various meetings with, we have some Bittners on our board. And I had a donor, Darish Coletti, here yesterday, and we were talking a bit about the Hospitality Center. And there really is a need in the industry for qualified employees that can work in tasting rooms and have the culinary component, but also know about wine and can take viticulture classes and be on the vineyard and learn about wine making. It's really rare to be able to find a student that has knowledge in all of that and could even drive a forklift, which they could learn at Napa Valley College. So it's exciting. It's definitely a need in the industry. So this is, I'll go back to kind of the overall scope of the project. This is an aerial view. You can see the adjacency to the wine storage facility and teaching winery. And again, the classroom building is on the right side, and on the left is where the tasting, the tasting room Hospitality Center will be. Next slide. So these are the naming recognition opportunities I wanted to bring to you this evening. We did an assessment. We have a fundraising consultant that works with us that has done naming for various other colleges and universities. And we also worked with our architects on the project to look at square footage and placement of various opportunities. And these are the main naming opportunities we want to propose. So $2 million for the exterior naming right of the building, $1 million for the interior naming right, $500,000 would be the Hospitality Training Center terrace, 250 would be the tasting area, and then the columns on the facility would be 100,000. The prep room, 50, and then exterior terrace seating at 25. And we would also have a Founder's Circle Society, which would be for donors that make a gift anywhere from 5,000 to 25,000 would also be recognized. So next slide, I can show you the placement of these opportunities on the building. Next slide. So this is some drawings of the interior opportunities. You can see the north and south-facing walls. The naming right for $1 million is the large red box. And then the other wall you see below with the plasma screen, the donor wall on either side would have the other naming rights. But the $1 million donor would have several options within the inside of the building. And that's what the large square is up top. Next slide. And these are the two east and west side-facing walls. So you can see the doors leading out to the terrace. That's the other $1 million opportunity. And then the tasting bar, which has the, you know, lower opportunities, the 250, and then the $50,000 opportunities on the bar. Next slide. And then these are the exterior opportunities. So this is the outside of the building. And this is the wall that would be facing the classroom portion. Next slide. And then this is the outside of the terrace. So on the right, you see the $500,000 naming opportunity. And then the other option for the $2 million exterior naming. And then the columns on the left. Next slide. And so those are all of the opportunities as we have them laid out. And I just wanted to review quickly, just a quick snapshot and timeline of kind of the, how this project has evolved. In November 2021 was when the Board of Trustees approved the Wine Spectator Scholarship Foundation gift of $10 million, which really kicked off this effort. And in January 2022 was when the Napa Valley College Foundation Board received the Evelyn Allen gift in support of agriculture and wine education. In March of this year, thanks to the college and Jim Reeves, they were able to get the architectural design completed. And if everything stays on track, we can break ground with the first phase of the project in September. So our goal is to hit the ground running to be able to raise the additional funds by September 2024, if not sooner, if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No public comment. Oh, hold on. Yes, we have former trustee Baldini.
Okay.
And I'm bringing him in.
Thank you.
There we are. You'll have to unmute yourself, trustee Baldini.
Yes. Good evening and good afternoon. One, I'd like to applaud Dean Marriott for his leadership in this area. This is really exciting, all the way down from the labels on the bottle to the welding and incorporating every aspect of viticulture and wine making as a manufactured good, as a, as a, the whole hospitality agreement. Everything is poised for a wonderful future. So I appreciate that. As we look at, and Jessica, I know this is probably a foundation thing, but we look at those levels. I think we drill down or ask a student about what they would like to contribute. And those 25,000, even the $5,000 level, is there something planned a little bit lower, like a paving stone on that outdoor patio that we could really reach down into those that graduated and haven't quite saved enough to buy their own vineyard or winery or haven't inherited? What we see there, or even what a trustee could contribute from their own pocketbooks that I see sitting there?
No, that's a, that's a great question. We will have naming opportunities at every level. Every little bit is going to help with this facility. I mean, it's, I think for purposes of this meeting, we wanted to get approval on those larger opportunities because it's a district property, and we have to make sure that if we're putting a name on the side of the building, that, you know, we have the approval first. But in terms of the lower opportunities, those are all going to be available. And we can come up with a range of creative ideas. We've already had a lot of creative ideas for wine bottles. And Michael, you're on the foundation board. So if you would like to head up naming stones or any, any creative idea, wine barrels.
A parking space right out in front of the building. Yes. A theme on it, yes. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Yeah, we want student involvement. We want everyone's involvement with this project. We want it accessible to everyone, especially the people that are going to utilize it. So we'll have a range of ways to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input, trustee Baldini. Catherine, do we have any other public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
I guess I, I just wanted to talk about naming, what naming rights really is. So in the donation, what, what is it going to look like as far as, you know, do they get to decide how big? Do they get to decide what it looks like? And also what actually goes on there? So, you know, if, if I were to make the $2 million donation, can I put whatever I want, whatever name I want up?
Right. And so, I mean, we would have a contract. There would be certain guidelines. You couldn't. Right. And so, I mean, we would have a contract. There would be certain guidelines. You couldn't put something up there that wasn't appropriate for the college. But, you know, you would be able to decide the name that you would want to use. It can be an honor or memory of someone. You know, there's various ways that donors like to be recognized. And in terms of the design, you know, what, what we would do is work with the architects in terms of the size of the lettering. So it's appropriate to the aesthetic of the building. And then we would also work with, well, you know, work with, we haven't hired yet, but a company that does naming. And so we would pick out fonts and sizes and colors and have, you know, a variety of options that we would present when we got to that level of detail. And I just want to comment as well that, you know, today we want to get approval on the opportunities. But when we have donors that step up and want to have their name on the building, we'll then come back to the trustees for approval of that donor, like we did with the Wine Spectator. So we wouldn't be naming something without at first going through an approval process.
Thank you. That's a helpful, helpful input or insight.
My personal feeling is that I'm not really crazy about the idea of wealthy donors being able to name buildings that are for the public. I'd rather see the public participate in the naming process, maybe by submitting suggestions. And then we can have like a board of like ranked, this is the top donors, these are the top donors, you know, plaques or something. That's, I mean, because we're really here to serve the public, not, not these donors. So I just, I'd rather see a more democratic process involved in that. And that's all I'm going to say about that.
Yeah, I completely hear that. And I, we have the donor wall, which we will recognize everybody and tier it, but we also have a, a budget of money that we have to raise to construct the project. And so we're just going by best practices of how to obtain those funds to finish the facility.
I understand. It's my understanding that most of the people that are going to donate are doing it to get a tax write-off, which is fine. But I would rather see, you know, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with the idea of our buildings named after like popular wineries or something so that it has the appearance that the college worked for this winery. And I don't want to, I don't want to single out any winery. But I, I'd rather the appearance that the, that we work for the public, not for donors.
Well, part of the foundation's job is we want to communicate more stories of our donors. I mentioned we have Darish Coletti here earlier this week, and he was out in the vineyard with students and Molly's class. And he was working and he was talking with them. And, you know, there are a lot of donors that have names that have a very hands-on approach and are interested in the college for reasons that aren't having their name on the wall. But you wouldn't know, you know, if you hadn't, you know, so we, as the foundation, we want to communicate those stories more. And, you know, be also a part of a democratic process.
Again, you could communicate those stories inside the wall with plaques or, or, you know, pictures or something.
And Jessica, there's no public funds available for this?
No.
Okay. Just, and any other questions from the board? Trustee Rios.
So I, I understand trustee Kishneff's comments. And, but I think that, I mean, I'm not, who knows, donors have different motivations, but I think that one of the things that this does is that it invests those people from the community in the college. And once we've got them invested in this way, there's a great chance that they're going to continue to support the college in our ongoing needs. And so I think this is a wonderful idea. And it's going to help us do something we've been trying to do. Certainly for as long as I've been here is to get more community members and industry and just the public involved in, in the college. So I think this is wonderful. I think the foundation's doing a great job.
And thank you, trustee Rios. Trustee Baker?
I have a question that I'm not, as usual, I'm sure is fully formed. But I'm just curious, because we had $10 million from Wine Spectator. And that's the name of the entire complex. And now we're talking about naming individual pieces within that complex. So I guess I have two pieces, two questions. Is it, one is Wine Spectator okay with that? And second is, was any discussion had about scaling back the, the complex to be more within what was already gifted? Or, I mean, I just want to make sure we're not building something just so we could put a name on it, if that makes sense.
No, that's a great question. And I can definitely share, you know, some background and history. When the gift was secured, the project was three phases. And this was 2020. And, you know, they had consultants and various people helping to put together a budget and a plan, but they, you know, hadn't gone through all of the details yet. So the idea was that $10 million would build a three-phase facility. Well, once we started going through the process and working with the architects, we saw that the project was a lot more for three phases. So we went through a process of redesigning and scaling back. So instead of it being three phases in the wine education complex, the Wine Spectator Wine Education Complex, it's now two phases. And the Wine Spectator agreed to the classroom portion, and it's going to be called the Wine Spectator Wine Education Center. And then what they decided along with us is the, the other portion, this would be the college's portion to fundraise for, with the understanding that they would open naming rights. So their naming rights are not on the whole facility, which was kind of the original plan. Because of how much the project changed, we scaled back and made it two phases. And then they opened up the second phase so we could fundraise, which is actually, I, I think, been really good for the college because there were a lot of winery partners that had questions about the fact that the college got this large gift and why weren't we partnering with, you know, other wineries and other vitners. And so I think this is a good way for us to engage the entire community around an effort. But yeah, we did talk about, had several conversations about scaling back. And there were a lot of conversations had about that. And we, we did, believe it or not, as much as we could without jeopardizing kind of the original mission and intent of what the project was.
Trustee Iverson?
I just wanted to thank all of your hard work and the foundation's work on this. And it's nice to see this happening. It's exciting for the college and the community. And I appreciate all the work. So thank you.
Trustee Olson?
I have a question. Are you only going to be engaging wineries and naming opportunities or the general public businesses and other industry-related companies?
Everybody.
Everybody. And then one more question. This is just, I'm just wondering, you know, it makes sense to name a building or a tasting room, but I'm just wondering about the columns. What, what does that look like when somebody gets to buy a column? Is it just their name on the column? Okay.
Yeah. If, if you, you look at the presentation, there's images of, and I'm trying to look at an example, think of an example of a facility that has naming rights where you could see something similar. Typically a plaque or lettering.
Got it.
And then like if you go to Ole Health's facility or Hal Polly's Viticulture Center, the, the Wine Business Institute at Sonoma Estates, you see various names just on various portions. But we worked with the architects to really choose good placement. So there aren't several names on one wall or, you know, so it's respectful of the, the building and the facade and the facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just, yeah, Jessica, thank you so much. Appreciate all of your hard work. I don't think it's any sort of coincidence, like when you started and, and things at the foundation have really started moving, including this, this donation. I know you're very humble and you've got a great team behind you. And you wouldn't take credit for all of it, but I, I did want to make that, that note publicly that a lot of, you know, the great work that's been happening at the foundation is, is certainly because of your leadership. So thank you for that. And thank you for being here in this wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you too as well, Dean Marriott. Appreciate you joining us this evening. Oh, yes, we do. We're going to do, it's not necessarily like, it's like a formal action. I think what the, the foundation board is, is, and the foundation is looking for is just general approval about the, this idea and the concepts behind us with the idea that the foundation would come back to us once they have certain sponsors and, and recommended certain amounts that would go under our, our board and administrative policies through the superintendent president's office before we'd go to the board for ultimate approval. So this is really just kind of a, a general thumbs up that, you know, the foundation has headed in the right direction on this project. So I would welcome a motion to that very ambiguous effect.
I'd move that. We give the thumbs up.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All in favor of the board except for trustee Kishneff. What do you know? Let's see. We are moving on to 9.2, our annual report and fiscal report submissions to the ACCJC. Dr. Warren.
Good evening, board. President Jim Reeves, vice president, sorry about that. Jim Reeves and I are here to share two reports that were submitted to the Accrediting Commission for Community Engineered Colleges. That's the ACCJC. Last week, the two reports are the annual report and the annual fiscal report. As implied by their names, both of them are required annual submissions to the ACCJC. The ACCJC uses the reports to do basically two things. One is to collect information about member institutions, which can then be compiled and reported at least in a general way to the federal accrediting agencies. And they also use it to monitor recent trends among member institutions. And those include trends in enrollments and institutional effectiveness metrics and changes that might be some cause for concern or trigger something like a change in institutional mission. You might recall that MBC was placed on enhanced fiscal monitoring a couple of years ago, and that was based on the annual fiscal report that was submitted that year. Last year, in part based to the, based on the action that the ACCJC took, based on our past submissions of these reports, last year we began the practice of presenting the reports to the board to increase your awareness about what's being submitted to the accrediting agency. So the annual report, or the AR, contains data on enrollments and institutional effective, effectiveness or performance metrics for the past three years. And the annual fiscal report, the AFR, contains information pertaining to institutional finances for the past three years. And so I'll provide an overview and a summary of the AR, and then Jim will do the same for the AFR. So the annual report is the mechanism that ACCJC uses to monitor enrollment trends. And that includes institutional headcount, enrollment and degree applicable courses, and the number of students attending via distance ed. And for any annual change in headcount that exceeds 50%, whether that's an increase or a decrease, we're required to provide some additional information about the change, to provide some additional context. So not surprisingly, and I assume that this happened among, at least if not all member institutions, at least a very high percentage of us. So not, not surprisingly, we had an increase in the number of students attending classes via distance education in 2020, 2021 versus 2019, 2020, right, where the pandemic hit at the mid to tail end of the, well, I guess the midpoint in the spring semester. So we also had two degree programs that experienced changes in headcount exceeding 50% last year. And one experienced a decrease, and the size of the decrease mirrored almost exactly the reduction in section offerings between the two years. And another experienced an increase which reflected an increase in section offerings along with some very deliberate increased collaboration with local community partners. So we only had two that exceeded the size of the swing. Let's see. So the ACCJC also uses the annual report to collect information on our institution set standards, stretch goals, and then actual performance on those metrics. And the metrics that we have identified locally include successful course completion, the number of degree and certificate recipients, and transfers to UC and CSU institutions. The Core Indicators Report, which my office produces annually, and we present to the board each fall, is our local mechanism for monitoring performance on our institution set standards. So as you've seen some of the information in the annual report before, I hope it might look familiar to you. And that is the reason that it did come to you in the fall. As conveyed through the Core Indicators Report last fall, performance on the transfer metric has been below the established standard the past two years. And some of that is, I think, particularly in the first year of that post during the pandemic, is students electing to defer their, their registration or enrollment for your institution in the hopes of having an experience that more closely reflects the pre-pandemic world. So we're also required to report the standards, stretch goals, and performance on some program level metrics. And those include job placement and licensure exam pass rates for a select portion of our programs, particularly in the career technical area and health occupations for the licensure exam pass rates. The actual job placement rates reported for MBC programs for past three years have met or exceeded the established standards. That's for job placement across the board. It's met or exceeded for all the three years across all of our programs. The licensure exam pass rates for a couple of programs did dip below their established standard. And I have distributed the program level performance metrics to both Dr. Murat and the appropriate deans so that they can share the information with program faculty and initiate discussions regarding improvement for programs that did not meet the established standard or a need to revisit stretch goals for the programs that have consistently exceeded the aspirational goals that they've defined. The annual report is shared with the planning and budget committee each year. It is on the agenda for the meeting next week. And we will also post it on the RPI website. And with that, I will turn it over to Tim for the AFR.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. Catherine, could you crack open that fiscal report? Thank you. As Dr. Warren indicated, this is a three-year look at our finances. The, scroll down just a bit, Catherine. Thank you. The data here reflects, is tied to our audit report that you've seen in January, in, in addition to our annual 320 report that we, we submitted to the chancellor's office last September. So if you're lying, like memorizing these numbers, they probably look a little familiar to you. So the three-year trend, we look at unrestricted general fund revenues. And you can see some trending there, how we've increased from 1920 to 2122. Down to section four, Catherine, please. That's good. Go up a little bit. You're a little quick on the trigger there. Yeah, that's good. That was the revenue. This is our expenditures and transfers. Again, it's aligned with with our, our audit and our 320 report. Scroll down a little bit more, Catherine. Thank you. We have no, we have very little long-term debt. We're reflecting leases. We have bond debt that's addressed with the county directly. That's not reflected in, necessarily in this report, I don't believe. Oh, the other debt service payments, you can see the bond debt there. It's an item six, the bottom of item six. Our, yes, thank you. So we have a current 2122, we have bond debt of $9.8 million. Scrolling down a bit, our OPEB liability is outlined here. We've talked about OPEB in the past. Those are our other post-employment retirement benefits. Includes the medical coverage for retired, qualifying retired, retired employees in addition to costs for, for SERP. We just added that a little bit. There are no SERP costs here because we hadn't begun it yet, but that's where you would find it. You see our funded ratio, where 10% of our OPEB is funded. And that's certainly, over the longer term, we need to look at how we fund that liability. Our total liability for OPEB is about 39 million. Scrolling down. This is, this is the reserves in trust for OPEB. So you can see how that's in climbing. And that's why we're at 20, excuse me, at 10% of our total liability. Number eight is our cash position. This is the combined general fund balance sheet, total unrestricted and restricted amounts. This is the combined general fund balance sheet, total unrestricted and restricted amounts. And you can see where we are, we're at twenty-one, twenty-two at over ten million dollars, which is a healthy cash position. And a good part of that is obviously in Fund twelve, the restricted portions. You may know this more detail than you'd like, that we do not we do not earn Fund twelve revenue until we spend it. Unlike Fund eleven revenue, where you earn it when you receive it. So, but we had a value there of over ten million dollars. Scrolling down, Catherine. There we go. Thank you. Here's our final adopted budget numbers. Full-time equivalent students, you can see how that's changed through the three years, which is twenty-one A, I think. From forty-seven sixty-six in nineteen twenty to thirty-four fifty-two in twenty-one, twenty-two. And we are, we're anticipating a level enrollment this year, though those numbers are still in play. Scrolling down, please, Catherine. Okay, and then we just had, we have a note where we had findings in our audits. I didn't see that. Scroll down a little further, Catherine.
That's the end.
It's at the end. Three years ago, we had five findings. Two years ago, we had two findings. That one year, we had one finding. The finding is a fifty percent law challenge. So all in all, this has gotten new information, but certainly from ACCJC's perspective, it's promising information. I shared, I shared to others at a conference, ACC shared with me that they had not seen an institution come off their enhanced monitoring quite as quickly as we did. So that all bodes well, and we will do our best to continue that trend. I'll certainly entertain any questions with Dr. Warren.
Any questions? Seeing none. Catherine, do we have any public comment, questions from the public?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much, Dr. Warren. And thank you very much, Mr. Reeves. We will go to what is an action item, eleven point one, guaranteed admission to Sonoma State University. Dr. Guerrero.
Okay, so good evening, Board, and very, very excited to be able to to have this, to present this information to you today. I'm going to ask Dr. Elias Lopez from Sonoma State University, who is here with us in the audience, to also help me in doing this presentation to you, for you. So we were approached by Sonoma State University, I believe, back in early, the early fall semester around October, to really think about and see what it potentially, a guaranteed admissions to Sonoma State would look like for Napa Valley College, our students to their institution. And we engaged with conversation with Sonoma State, actually went out, Dr. Powell, myself, and our former VP, Bob Harris, went out to Sonoma State and spoke with their leadership around what what the pieces of a guaranteed admissions would look like. And I want to, I want to state that a guaranteed admissions with the CSU is actually something unique. The University of California system offers guaranteed admissions for our students, but not the CSU. So this would be something that I think for Napa Valley College is definitely something move us into the direction of really impacting our students to ultimately get them to the university, another option for them, in addition to the UCs and the privates. Sonoma State University is forty-five miles away from Napa Valley College. It is one of, one of the schools that many of our students transferred to. And this guarantee would really offer that opportunity for them to to be even as we're coming into Napa Valley College, or considering Napa Valley College already have a school in mind. In particular, this is going to impact our DEI, or specifically impacted students, our Black Indigenous African American students, and really offering options to them to run a school near, near, near us. And I wanted to also state that last year, we, we had ninety students from Napa Valley College who transferred over to Sonoma State University and enrolled. And this, this guaranteed admissions allows us the opportunity to really think about doubling that number and getting more students over to, to the university. So ultimately, the goal is to create pipelines. Pipelines from the high schools to community college, community college to the university, and then hopefully come back to our community as leaders, as folks who have received their their degrees and really be able to impact our community. So I wanted to, if you could actually open up the guaranteed admissions, Catherine, for this, please? Yeah, MOU? Yes, and this is the MOU that we've set up with Sonoma State, and I actually will ask Dr. Lopez, you can take it from here.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting us. It's, it's an honor to be here with you, and I think this is an exciting opportunity for us. I'm here on behalf of our president, President Mike Lee, who's made this a top priority. But before, I'm going to go into the elements of the MOU, not the whole thing, just because I just want you to make sure that this is very well thought out. But before I do that, I would personally like to thank the superintendent and President, President Powell, and then also Alejandro Guerrero, because they went and visited us with us over there, met with us, spent the whole afternoon so that then we can hash this out, and here we are today. So I would really like to commend for taking the time to meet with us. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through, if we can scroll down to item C. And, and you see that a lot of times you'll see guaranteed admissions. But when you look at the GPA for guaranteed admissions, a lot of them are a three-point-oh GPA. What we're offering to Napa Valley College is the minimum CSU standards to admit a transfer student. The minimum G requirements that are needed for transferring the sixty units and a two-point-oh GPA. That is significant because I think that the goal is to make it as seamless as possible, but then be able to guarantee the admissions to Sonoma State. Now, let me, let's scroll down to item D. And item D makes it seem like it's very restrictive, but it's actually not as restrictive at the C, because it says that, you know, guaranteed admissions is possible for every single major except the impacted majors. Let me tell you what's happened to Sonoma State in the last two years. I've been in the role for the Senior Associate Vice President at Sonoma State for the last two years. What we've been able to do with the support of the Provost, Karen Moransky, is we've been able to get, we had twelve impacted programs twelve years ago, now we're down to four impacted programs. The only business is no longer impacted, biology is no longer impacted, kinesiology, early childhood, et cetera. So this guaranteed admissions is very broad in terms of the number of majors. The four majors that are still impacted is nursing, psychology, sociology, and criminal justice. So, so I think it's a very broad offer in terms of what we've been working to try to make sure that we maximize. So let's move on to item G, please. So the best way to have students transfer, item G, think, think of, think of item G as a two plus two. They can do two years at the community college, and they're basically guaranteed to be able to graduate in two years when they get to Sonoma State. The associate degree for transfers has a set of courses that are mapped out at the community college level. Your articulation officers working with our articulation to map out, and the academic department to map out the sequence of courses. The worst case that can happen to a student is that they get, they get to the Sonoma State University, and then they have to take one or two more courses there as prerequisites. ADT avoids that scenario, so I think it's very important on a timely. The, the other thing too is that very few people know that Sonoma State is part of a twenty-three CSU system. Sonoma State has the number one two-year graduation rate among the twenty-three system. It's not San Diego, it's not the Cal Poly, it's Sonoma State. So the ADT is very important for both of us, because I think that then it can ensure the success of your students when you get there also as well. And then the last element I would like to bring up is number H. Now, H is very important because what happens is the students apply, transfer students are normally going through orientation and registering for courses at Sonoma State in May, right, when they haven't finished all their courses. But what happens currently, and what we want to try to avoid, is that even with partial credit that they've done, even those partial courses that they've done up to then, if we were to get an electronic transcript with all the courses submitted, and we can build the transfer credit components, so that when they go register for courses, they need as many of the prerequisites as possible. And that's the importance of H. H transcripts is a resource made by the state of California, and it's a free resource at no cost to the community college. And lastly, I would want to say that the, the, like I said earlier, the commitment, and this is a top priority for our president, Mike Lee, and the cabinet, and for all of us, because every CSU has a set of assigned counties. Napa County is one of the counties that's assigned to Sonoma State University. So I think that we're very committed to this partnership, and again, I want to thank you for allowing us to be here. And then if there are any questions, take any questions.
Quickly, just add to Dr. Lopez's statements, is that the commitment goes beyond the working relationship where we've actually seen their institution commit to our students scholarships, guaranteeing money to our students to be able to, to attend for, actually, the fall, for Fall of Twenty-three. So they actually identified our students, and were able to, to award scholarships of, I believe, two thousand dollars each.
For twenty-four students.
Twenty-four students really making an impact. So, you know, part of our, our strategic plan for the college really is to work with our partners, and this is, I think, a good example of how we're able to do that, really impacting those who need the most. And ultimately, all of our students, and just offering other options for, for our, our community. So we're excited about this opportunity, and would, would love to entertain any questions or any comments.
There's one thing I'd just like to add. First off, thank you, Dr. Lopez, for coming out today, and of course, for extending the invitation for us to explore this. Thank you, Dr. G, for your work on this. I'd just like to add that this, these types of partnerships are so essential for us, because they really begin to execute on the principles of, of the Guided Pathways Initiative, right? Because it allows us to, at the earliest stage possible, to help our students think what their next phase will be beyond Napa Valley College, and then also to, in a very intentional and deliberate way, execute on those, on those next level plans once they leave us. It minimizes the gap in opportunity for a student to fall between in terms of not knowing where they want to go, or delaying even potentially their transfer, going back into work. This really, you know, helps with that throughput and expedites students' academic journey by getting them on track and getting them connected as early as possible. It's really the beginning, I think, of much more robust conversations that we've already begun engaging in, in terms of ways that we can collaborate more efficiently, really get students exposed to Sonoma State and, and all the options that it has, if that's where they choose to pursue further down the road. So really, again, want to thank you for your, your continued partnership, your leadership in this space, and really look forward to us doing some more on behalf of our students.
Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board?
Comment, question?
Trustee Reeves.
I think this is wonderful. I think this should help us increase the enrollment here. And on that vein, I'm wondering, when and how do you get this out to the high schools?
So one of the, one of the pieces that's, that's part of this MOU is that we're going to be providing marketing materials to Napa Valley College, so when they go out into the high schools. As soon as this MOU gets signed, and I'm hoping that, you know, as soon as it gets approved by the board, that then I'll get the signatures on my end, and then we can begin the work of kind of getting the marketing materials and all the relationships and all the, the components that are part of the MOU. But I think we're very excited, and it's we're glad that we're, we're able to get to this point so quickly.
And I'd add to that, too, that the relationships and the connections are already established at the high schools, so we're already working closely with them. This is just going to be an additional item now that we can really, really work towards letting our, our young people in the schools know about as soon as possible. So as soon as we are able to move forward on this, we're, we're ready to hit the ground running on this.
Great, thank you. Trustee Iverson.
I just, this is a huge opportunity, and I wanted to thank Dr. Lopez and your team, and Dr. Powell, and Dr. G. I mean, this, this is the kind of stuff that I think we all strive to see for our students. I did see one little small typo on the MOU. I don't know if we're signing it tonight, but.
It must, it must be my Spanglish.
Thank you.
Trustee Donina.
I just wanted to thank you. I think, you know, knowing my son is graduating from Sonoma State in a few weeks. And, you know, I would have loved to have had this for him. Just because it, you know, it, it's, it's grueling as a parent to like not know what the next step is, I think. Especially as a single mother. But, you know, I just really appreciate all the hard work that you're all, that you've all done, and I'm just super grateful that this is something we can provide for our community.
I'll chime in, too. I want to thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Guerrero. I love, love the campus out there. I think it's a great opportunity to serve our public and a great way to take off any little bit of stress, you know, if a student doesn't have to worry about whether they're going to be accepted or not, that's great. Thank you.
Well, I would welcome a motion for approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Donina. And thank you, trustee also.
The typo being changed.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Or approves the MOU unanimously. Thank you so much, Dr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen point one, Bookstore Services Contract Award. Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, President Dodd. I'm pleased to present Carol Lee from our District Auxiliary Services, who has been the prime mover and shaker here. So Carol Lee, take it away.
Hi. Good evening, Dr. Powell and Board of Trustees. I'm here to give you a little background on our boarded agenda item for the Bookstore Services Contract, which is a contract that's managed through the Enterprise and Auxiliary Office. Excuse me, Enterprise and Auxiliary Services Office. That's my department. And before I turn it over to Sarah Foissy, our Regional Manager from Follett, I'll just give you a little bit of where we've been for the last ten years. So we issued an RFP for Bookstore Services in March. Thank you, Catherine. And we described sort of the baseline of the college environment, and we also stressed that we have a two-hundred-and-eighty-unit housing project coming, and we want to see what opportunities that might lead to with our new partner. Next slide, please. Our goals and the outcomes we expect include, include improved affordability for students and improved revenues for the district, as well as some other wonderful. Next slide, please. A quick thank you to the RFP Selection Committee, Jim, Shawna Bynum, Pamela Rosento, and Yacenia Cota. As you can see by the timeline, we, we didn't have a lot of meeting availability. We had to really crunch our review, our interviews, reference checks, scoring. That we have a proposal to bring to you tonight, so. Thank you. Next slide, please. Over the last ten years, Barnes and Noble has been a great partner for the college. And we have seen about a million dollars in commissions, scholarships, and other funds, like textbook subsidies. As you can kind of see from this chart, the bookstore landscape has changed. There have, you know, there was COVID, of course, but also reduced enrollment, growing. Uh, there have, you know, there was COVID, of course, but also reduced enrollment, growing OER availability, which is all a good thing for our students, open educational resources, zero cost and low cost textbooks. Um, have created some challenges for the bookstore industry in, uh, keeping their viability. And they've come up with some new models, sort of a subscription model called Open Access sometimes. Where a student's tuition fees cover all of their, um, materials and textbooks. And we will be looking at that in the next year or so to see if it makes sense for our campus and our students. And we, we have high expectations of this refresh. We thought it will will reinvigorate revenue streams and, uh, services for students. Um, next steps include completing a contract. Um, we're in discussions. Um, the proposed contract does not seem to have any challenges to it. We're also having a kickoff meeting next week with IT facilities, campus police, academic affairs, as well as admissions and records, uh, to do the tie-in with self-service. And, um, we will also be forming an advisory committee, which is a new thing for the campus, but will strengthen our communications and, uh, our ability to give good guidance to the bookstore. Now I'll turn it over to Sarah. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. My name's Sarah Foisey and I'm Regional Manager for Follett Higher Education Group. I oversee stores from Humboldt down to Fresno, um, and that does include twelve, uh, California Community College stores. Including, um, nearby, um, Saguano, Santa Rosa, um, and more. So I hope we'll head and go to the slide. So Follett has actually been a family-run company for over a hundred and fifty years. Um, over the past year, we were acquired, acquired by Jefferson River Capital, which is also a family-run organization. Um, and we currently oversee over fifty California community colleges. Um, over the past few years, we've actually invested over three hundred million dollars into, um, innovation and bringing new solutions to campus, to campuses and campus communities. Um, and this included fifty million dollars into our website. And then also our recent acquisition of Willow, which provides, uh, LTI and LMS, um, management solutions. Um, we actually have over a thousand campus stores nationwide, um, including six thousand teenagers. Um, which includes student employees. And I actually started as a student employee with Follett, um, and so that employing students is near and dear to my heart. Um, it creates a big pipeline for us into our leadership roles. And I think it's a really important part of what we do. Excellent. So we want to make sure that we're reflecting the excellence of Napa Valley College. And that we're really supporting you and helping your students achieve their educational goals. So this includes making sure that we are supporting student learning. Um, and this does include OER initiatives, low cost, zero cost initiatives. But it also includes traditional books, um, digital, rental. Uh, and we really provide the gamut of textbooks to make sure that students have what they need. Um, one of the most important pieces that of what we do is support the college in, um, your Higher Education Opportunity Act compliance. And that is to show the students the true cost of their classes, um, by showing them the cost of the course materials. And the bookstores at most campuses, um, they're repository of that information so that the students are able to see, they see what they need for their classes. Um, we offer convenient shopping options. So we, I know that a lot of students, especially in the areas that I service are underpaid. Um, and so we want to make sure that we're offering both online options, in-store options, cash, uh, card, talk to pay, et cetera. And just so that the students are able to both have convenience, um, but also have different solutions. And, um, I know that it was brought up to me, the idea of extending hours on Tuesdays or, um, potentially looking at other days of the week to make sure that we're able to service, uh, wider student population. Um, we also do provide, um, an immediate access and equitable access, um, textbook solution. Um, and part of this is the students, actually, um, the cost of course materials is charged onto the student's account and the student receives the course materials on day one. And students are always allowed to opt out of the program. Um, but we have seen success, um, with, um, various studies that were not full sponsored, um, have actually shown, uh, student success and student, um, outcomes. Um, and of course, increased student outcomes improves retention, um, and graduation rates with the college. So making sure that they have the materials that they need to learn is really the most important factor of that program. Um, next one. So another piece, um, that we want to make sure that we're partnering with you on is making sure that we are able to um, communicate to students throughout their student journey, um, but also support students and support the college throughout the student journey. Uh, so this includes, um, orientation and, um, right now you have, uh, virtual orientation. We have materials that can tie in with that. Um, making sure that we're supporting students through the academic journey. Partnering with athletics, do athletic pop-ups and bring excitement to games, sporting events. Um, all the way through making sure that we're celebrating the student at graduation. Um, and then it can also include alumni efforts or foundation efforts and, um, thinking through um, how we're partnering with you to outreach to alumni or to the wider community. Uh, next slide. A bit flexible of how what we believe in is academic freedom. Um, we know that that's extremely important to colleges and to faculty. So what we want to make sure is that we are providing the course materials that you need for your classes. Um, so this includes making sure that we have a wide variety of form factors. Um, if a textbook is adopted, making sure we're partnering with faculty to provide the lowest class options for that particular, um, material. Um, we also offer expedited shipping for related options. We know that there are always situations where there's a late hire or a faculty member needs additional time. Um, and it really just comes down to communication and making sure that we are partnering with both the department and the faculty member on that. Uh, we do also source textbooks, um, from a wide variety of places. So there's of course the traditional publishers. Um, but we also source books from our network of stores and from our students, um, during buyback. Um, and then of course we have OER. So I know that, um, many community colleges have OER initiatives and zero cost course materials initiatives. So it's always our goal to meet with the leaders of those initiatives and making sure that they understand different ways that we can support OER and also the different ways that we can communicate OER to your students so that the students are able to see that in the course schedule search. Okay, next slide. And you can skip to the next slide again. Um, so in summation, I just want to say thank you so much for wanting to be here. Um, we're really excited and I'm really excited about the different opportunities that Napa Valley College brings. Um, I'm very excited about the new building and I love to do initiatives that you guys are doing. Um, so I really wanted to open up the floor and see if anybody has any questions. Um, and also I wanted to let you know that, um, of course there will be additional opportunities. So if you want to do a deep dive on any of the initiatives or any of the cases, that there will be, um, additional opportunities for that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Foisey. Uh, before we, uh, jump into board questions, I'll see if there's any public comment on this action item.
No, we have no public comment.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Any, uh, trustee Iverson?
I just had one quick question related to like the foundation and alumni outreach. And if we've talked to the college foundation, like how does that work?
So I, I talked to her for like two minutes, so not really. Um, so it'd really just be, uh, an opportunity to have a conversation and see what the needs are. Um, so some different ways that we support alumni associations or we can actually do fundraising through our website or, um, help support alumni scholarships. Um, we also will do different partnerships with them on, um, their mailers and we can provide different, um, signup incentives or discounts. Um, and with foundation, I think it would be interesting to just really sit down with Jessica and see, see the different initiatives that she's going through. Um, but one potential idea is, is there some kind of partnership that we could do with? And I'm, I know I'm throwing things at the wall right now, so please don't, uh, take this as gospel. Uh, but one interesting idea would be to partner with the foundation. Um, really, let's see what the cost of course materials are for a year for Napa Valley College students. And see if that's, see if the community wants to start sponsor course materials for the year. Um, and I think that there's just different opportunities that we can really partner on and see what might be interesting.
Yeah, then last one is, so so much is available online. Now what's the biggest difference? And in a nutshell, between what you guys are providing and what we had in the past?
Um, my goal for the difference is marketing outreach and community partnerships. So I want to make sure that we're really looking at, um, um, putting together a marketing plan and putting together an outreach plan so that we're partnering with the different organizations on campus. And then also looking out to the community and seeing what opportunities that there are there as well. Um, I know that we don't sell wine in the bookstore right now, and I think that that could be a potential opportunity. I know the winery, for example, sells wine through the website and there's a Wine of the, Wine of the Month Club. Um, and I think that just, um, building those relationships, we'll be able to see what additional opportunities there are. Which of course brings revenue streams, but it also brings, um, opportunities for visibility for Napa Valley College. So.
Yes, trustee Baker.
Um, I actually have two questions. One, I think is for Mr. Reeves, but, um, uh, my, my other question is, um, I'm intrigued by the Follett Discover and how you use it for, um, delivery and curation of OER. Um, but I know, and I don't know if, um, our library uses Follett for print resources, but I do know that you don't use it for your ILS. So I'm just curious, because since we're not on Follett Destiny, how does how does that integrate with a foreign ILS? Or does it?
So we have, um, we have different vendors loaded on to Follett Discover such as Merlot. Um, and faculty can source materials through that and then students are able to see it. Um, but if faculty work outside of the Discover environment to source their OER, that's okay too. We want to make sure that we're supporting faculty and we're supporting the library and how they're finding those materials. So in those particular cases, we can either provide a link or simply say, you know, see your faculty member for your OER content. Um, so there's a few different variety, uh, a few different options there. Um, I, this is I tend to perhaps be a little too creative, um, but I was talking to our Willow team as well, who provides, um, LTI and LMS integrations. Um, and they, they, um, I was talking about the possibility if the library uses LTI, could that be rolled into the tool as well? Um, so that, so that students are really receiving that one stop shop for their course materials. Um, and I think that we're, we're really kind of in the beginning stages of that conversation. But I think that that would be an additional opportunity for the future as well. And right now, um, within our region, we're piloting Willow at UC Merced. And then we are talking to Merced College about adding it for the coming fall.
My other question.
My other question, um, was I noticed in, uh, Carol Lee's, um, thing that there's, it was a five-year contract with options for five-year renewal. Is that a single chunk of five years or is it five single years?
We're requesting that the initial contract be for five years. And that the ed code, uh, um, indicates that we can renew for up to five additional years after the initial five years.
So it could be individual years?
So it could be five one-year extensions or one five-year extension for a total of ten.
Trustee Kishna.
Yeah, I have several questions. Um, I assume that the reason we stopped operating the bookstore ourselves and brought in Barnes and Noble was because it was more financially feasible to do so. Um, but I'm wondering if we requested proposals from any other companies besides Barnes and Nobles and Follett?
Uh, we had four participants in the RFP, but we, our, I should say, we had four collect the documents and two submitted proposals. So, uh, the the major two companies that do bookstore operations.
Thank you. Um, do, does Follett, are you offering used textbooks? I'm trying to keep the students in mind as much as possible.
We do. We offer, um, used rental and digital textbooks, um, for those lower price options. And then we also offer, um, loose leaf, which some people like and some people don't. It offers an initial, um, lower priced option for the students.
Also I read flat fee. Now does that, that mean that it's, the books are included in the admission price? Or does that mean that all books cost the same and even those needing smaller books have to pay a a bigger cost to pay for like the thicker books like chemistry or physics?
So there's multiple options. And typically what we do is, um, we start with pricing it out. So we, um, ask for an anonymized student data. Um, and so we actually can identify, you know, student A, the price of their course materials is three hundred dollars. Student B, the price of their course materials is fifty dollars. And then we actually chart it out and determine an average price across the students. Um, and then we have a discussion about whether, um, OER materials should be accepted or included. Um, because of course OER materials, zero cost to us, zero cost to students. Oh, they're lowering the average price. So there's a lot of math and there would be a lot of discussion, um, in partnership with all of you to determine if that's the route that you wanted to go. Um, but we do also offer course by course um, options in which, so let's say a course is using an eighty-dollar, um, textbook right now. Um, we partner with the publisher, we partner with the campus to lower the price of that particular textbook. And so the students there, there's no averaging. The student's just paying the price for that particular class. And of course, across all programs, students do have the option to opt out.
So we're not locking into any one of those here today?
Exactly. No. And, um, they would be options for future discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One more question. I was confused about what you said about athletics and what that has to do with the bookstore.
So we, um, obviously sell clothing in the bookstore. Um, and so we can do pop-ups and sell clothing like a spirit shop type setup.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just had a comment. Uh, thank you, Carol Lee and for Follett. And I know that this has been a area of concern for a while, so good job.
If I can just add a closing comment, if, if you will, um, I, I will share that, uh, the, the disposition of the search committee was universal and they're in excitement and endorsement to move in this direction. I will also add that in my career, I've worked with both of these firms. And I think we can look forward to the kind of polish and energy and excitement that Follett will bring to us. We have great expectations for them and, uh, we're going to hold them to that. I would also add, uh, add trustee Iverson that, that the foundation will be, will be invited to the advisory board. So we have a, a direct connection to them. Uh, and their needs. So we have some exciting opportunities, some of which we have not explored, uh, previously and and we're excited about the prospect of, uh, this partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Well, I would welcome a motion for approval. Thank you, trustee Iverson. Second, and thank you, trustee Reeves, for your second, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Kishna, thank you very much, Ms. Foisey. Thank you so much for being here too. We're really excited for the opportunity as well. Uh, item thirteen point two, General Fund eleven budget update.
Thank you, President Dodd. Uh, Catherine, can you, uh, open up the Fund eleven report? Trustee Olson, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. This looks a little different than the fund eleven reports that I've shared with you in the past. And it looks different uh, because we added some information that you approved at the last meeting. This is a fund eleven report, the unrestricted general fund. Uh, it is not the restricted fund, so just a reminder that that is not the case. Um, we've added column uh, F, which is the um, which is the agreed upon budget with the changes you adopted last meeting. G is where the variance has occurred. So column G is where we inserted uh, funds or reduced funds based, generally based on um, the information that I shared with you last um, last month. So you'll see where, where we started the adopted budget in um, last fall in September, but we are adjusting it to. And in the column G, you'll, you will see where we actually did the, the adjustments. You'll see reflections uh, of um, where we reduced, where we had capacity to reduce in parentheses there. And then where we've added um, uh, in, in order to address those um, additional expenditures, some surprise expenditures, including that utility bill, that natural gas bill that, that occurred. So I'm going to move you to column K and L, uh, which um, gives you, which is a barometer for how we're doing relative to um, last year, column K. And this year's adjusted budget, column L. So I'll look to column L now, we're at seventy-five percent of the budget, we're, we're at the end of the third quarter. Um, so those percentages on the far right, um, generally speaking, we want them to be around seventy-five percent, though there are timing issues involved with some. On the revenue side, we're hitting at about sixty-four percent. We've received sixty-four percent of the revenue that we budgeted for this year. Compared to last year, we have received sixty-seven percent, so we're within striking range there. Um, our, our property tax revenue is um, sixty-one percent this year and sixty-three percent last year. So again, we're within striking distance there. On our salaries, we're, we're hovering right in the seventy-five percent range. So total salaries, we're at seventy-two percent compared to that adjusted budget uh, and at three quarters of the way through um, uh, the year. Under benefits, we're at seventy percent of our budget, our adjusted budget number. So again, we are trending favorably there. In uh, our total books and supplies, we're a little higher at eighty-two percent. Uh, we were seventy-seven percent last year. I will add that most of those expenditures have likely occurred this year because those expenditures were needed previous to the last quarter of the year. We'll, we'll likely see a little bit there, but not a lot. Uh, and the numbers, the actual dollar values are fairly, are relatively um, smaller in that area. But we're at eighty-two percent there. In, in capital outlay, excuse me, and uh, total other operating expenditures, we're right at seventy-five percent. So we're tracking, um, tracking fairly favorably. And then in, and um, OPEB is a pretty standard cost, uh, we haven't hit some of the expenses there. Uh, the bottom line is um, with the adjusted budget, we're still about $370,000 above uh, where we were last year. So uh, I hesitate to do any uh, back of the envelope math here, but we are trending, continue to be trending positively. And uh, with uh, with an expectation that we will make a contribution uh, to our reserves at the end of the year. Trustee Olson, would you add anything?
No.
Well done, thank you trustee Olson. Any questions? See none, thank you very much for the, the update, Mr. Reeves. Uh, we will move on to our constituency reports. Do we know if uh, Ms. Sharma is here this evening?
We have no uh, constituent group presidents here except for uh, Bob Vanderbelt.
That's wonderful news, Mr. Vanderbelt, please go ahead.
Thank you, uh, President Dodd and members of the board. Um, thank you again for the opportunity to report on the activities of the administrative senate. I'm pleased to report that in close collaboration with faculty, classified staff and students, we are finalizing AP twenty-four-ten, the administrative procedure that lays out how new and revised policies and procedures to be promulgated. This was an extensive and extended process, but I'm confident that with Dr. Powell's support, the needed administrative voices will be appropriately involved along the way. We've also reinstated mutual gains meetings with uh, President Powell, now scheduled on a monthly basis to address issues with the administrative confidential group, which are not part of any collective bargaining unit on campus. In particular, we helped to establish clear processes for reclassifications within our group and to help reduce turnover by bringing compensation in line with comparable institutions. Uh, I mentioned turnover with just the latest touch of irony, uh, since as you know, this will be my next to the last board of trustees meeting, sitting in his chair representing administrative senate. Uh, in recent months, we've talked about concerns about attacks on academics, our struggles with technology, issues Owen Khan with artificial intelligence, and provided some background on our very valuable confidential employees. Uh, this month, I'd like to reflect for just a moment on where we've been and where the college is heading. We are in a far better place than where we were just a year ago. They say that the first thing that you do when you find yourself in a hole is stop digging. And I believe we've done just that. The ACCJC accreditation process has helped us identify important issues and to begin addressing freshman leadership, establishing clear governance protocols, getting out from under fiscal monitoring, and bringing back so many activities back to campus has made all of the difference. We are not yet back to where we were pandemic, but and the post-pandemic world is certainly a very different place. But I believe we are on the right track. We have room to grow with broadening course offerings, implementing state mandated initiatives, which we'll hear a little bit more about in a moment, uh, developing plans for a twenty-four-seven campus occasioned by the start of student housing. We continue to improve our governance and planning practices, including greater budgetary transparency. But I firmly believe that we are on a far better trajectory as we near the end of this academic year. Next month, we will announce the winner of the administrative confidential employee of the year. We have lots of nominees, we've done lots of interesting and worthwhile work this year. And I'm looking forward to presenting one of my colleagues to my final meeting of the board. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, so no other reports, okay? Um, then we'll move on to the president and cabinet reports. We'll start with Dr. Moore.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Catherine, for pulling that open. Okay, um, I wanted to start by recognizing uh, the predecessors in this role. Uh, Bob Harris and Dr. Parker. And with recognition that they got um, academic affairs through a very difficult time, the pandemic and then the um, issues with our digital services. And so I, I am very grateful to them for the work that they have done. Um, one of the first things that I've done in my role in my first month, I'm very excited, I'm now in my second month, yay. Um, has been meeting the campus community as well as uh, some of our community members. Um, it has been wonderful and as I told, I held a faculty forum earlier today and there were about probably fifty faculty present. And I told them, uh, you know, I've fallen in love with Napa. So, you know, I, I love it and I'm so enjoyed my time here and I look forward to um, many years ahead. Um, a few things that I wanted to share with you is um, regarding schedule building. So that tends to be a very complicated and sometimes fraught space. Um, and we've been through uh, many changes. So we have seen, of course, the conversion to online during the pandemic and then trying to bring uh, find the right balance between online and person and hybrid courses. And so um, three of the tenants that I'm really basing a lot, my decision-making on and what I've asked the deans and the program coordinators to be working with is first and foremost, building around student need. What is the impact on students, what is best for students? Um, a second tenant is, the best schedule is one that doesn't change. That's very pie in the sky, schedules always change. We cannot predict with exact certainty um, a schedule. But the goal is it should change very minimally. What we want is when students see our classes on the schedule, they know that we're offering them, that they can rely on them. So part of that is going to the third tenant recalibrating. Um, we have had some downshifts in enrollment. And in some areas, we've had some growth. So we need to assess every semester, where do we reduce sections where there's lower demand so that we don't get forced into uh, significant numbers of cancellations? That is the very worst thing and sends the wrong message. And where we're seeing some growth, let's add in a section or two or whatever level is needed to meet that need. So those are the um, tenants that I've asked the deans to address. Um, we're between our first and second phase of the schedule building process. And they have been making changes um, based on those tenants. I also wanted to talk just very briefly, a snapshot of what I consider a very important data point so that we can recognize where we um, have been. I'm comparing spring twenty-twenty to spring twenty-twenty-three just to highlight the really significantly different place that we're in and to um, give foundation to one of the goals that I am trying to address. So you can see that in spring twenty-twenty, our um, in-person sections were our largest proportion of what we offered at five hundred and twenty-seven sections or seventy-eight percent of our offerings, with both online and hybrid being a much smaller proportion. Currently in this spring semester, that has flipped very dramatically with only a hundred and fifty-four of our classes being offered in person or thirty percent. And then um, the largest proportion of our classes being online and then twenty-two point nine-five percent being hybrid. This is not to say that online and hybrid are not good options. We need to provide the options that our students need. However, if we do not provide an in-person presence and an in-person experience for our students, we are not fully meeting need and we are probably not addressing some populations who might be reluctant to engage in an online-only environment. And so one of the commitments that I am making, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down a tad, Catherine, is that we need to invest in our in-person classes. Um, I've asked that some of the previously scheduled online sections be converted to in-person for fall. And I want a continuous assessment of the distribution of courses and their modalities. Um, it is again, with recognition that students have uh, learned that um, online is a safer option. By that, I mean, we haven't canceled as many online sections as in-person. So I want, I don't want to over-schedule in-person, but when we do schedule in-person, I want to support those classes. Um, even in some cases where their numbers might not be as high as we would ideally want. But I want to make the commitment that when we offer a class, a student can rely on it being held. So those are some of the principles that um, I've been asking our areas to work with. Just a couple of other points, um, another thing that I'm working on and this is very much in, under discussion. So when I say the goal, that is the goal. Um, and we will see what happens, but building toward a compressed calendar, that is a conversion from our current eighteen-week semester to a sixteen-week term. And there are lots of good reasons to do this, I could go into great deal, perhaps at another time. If we do move toward a compressed calendar, I can talk more about them. But this has a positive benefit for students. Again, driving um, purpose for everything that we are doing in academic affairs is what serves students? What is best for students? Student success rates, persistent completion are all uh, improved with a move to a compressed calendar. People find it easier to sustain their attention and effort when it is not as prolonged. Very beneficial if we can make this change. Um, and then the last thing, looking further ahead, um, three pieces of legislation that are going to have a significant impact on us. AB seventeen oh five, which is the uh, a parent partner piece to AB seven oh five, um, addresses some limitations on uh, math and English course and which initial course students can uh, join depending on their major. This will require us to do work on a curriculum level to make changes to uh, courses that may have had a prerequisite previously that's no longer allowable. AB nine twenty-eight, sometimes this is referred to as Cal Getzi, which unifies the GE transfer requirements so that you, you may be aware that if a student wants to transfer to uh, CSU versus a UC, they have different requirements. It is very confusing. And if a student wants to keep all their options open, it's like playing a game of matrix like, oh goodness, which class, that class? And maybe this one? So um, the goal of Cal Getzi is to unify those uh, requirements. But it will also require community colleges, including Napa Valley, to make some pretty significant um, changes in terms of how we schedule, which classes are required. And there are some new requirements that come into play. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight again, just looking ahead to the next year or two of what we will need to work on, AB um, eleven eleven, the common course numbering, you may have heard about. Uh, the intent is that all of the courses across the community college system have the same numbers so that it's very easy when a student moves from one college to another college, they can recognize what course they've completed. This is going to be huge, um, it's going to be most likely in a phase-in approach. Uh, so it's impossible to do all at once. But I'll provide updates on where we're going with those uh, as we move ahead. And I'm excited to be doing this work, thank you.
Getting me fired up, is anybody else still fired up like that? Thank you, Dr. Moore, alright. Thank you, Dr. Moore, and um, I'm looking forward to, to the collaborations because it's critical that um, Student Affairs um, and Academic Affairs work really closely on everything you talked about. So I look forward to that space. Um, if Catherine, you can pull up uh, my, my report. I thought I changed things, things up a bit this, this time around and um, just, we've been really, really busy in, in Academic Affairs. So I thought it would be important for you to see some of the, some of the actual moments of what we've been doing over this, these last few um, last few weeks. So um, let's go ahead and scroll down. So wanted to start by, by uh, talking to you a little tonight about NBC Exploration Days. And Napa Valley College or NBC Exploration Days is, it's really a um, an idea that we came up with in the fall semester. I introduced this to you, but we've went ahead and made, taken some action on this. And it's this uh, collaboration between Academic Affairs and Student Affairs to really um, come together and showcase, show our campus to the, to the college and to the school communities. Uh, in particular, our American uh, Canyon areas and our valley. So specifically, the goal here is to really introduce higher education to um, our, our young people and, and demonstrate to them that college is not only possible, but that Napa Valley College wants them here. So um, we've had two NBC Exploration Days and um, or actually, we had one, our second one is next week. And uh, about a hundred and fifty or so students from, from uh, American Canyon and UTEC together came, came to campus and explored our campus. We brought them together, we, we put them in the pack and do an introduction to them around kind of what is college all about. Um, there's a welcome from the leadership team. And then they learn about our programs, they learn about the learning communities, learn about our academic programs. And then after that, we take them on campus, we take them to the, to the classroom, we expose them to the programs. Um, they meet the professors, they have lunch, you gotta feed young people pizza. Um, and uh, some music for them as well. And then after that, we, we break them up into smaller groups and they, they go through workshops, learn all about uh, financial aid, um, learn about how to navigate college successfully, um, and then fill out the application for NBC. So this is much more than just showing them about the campus, but it's actually having them take action steps to get enrolled at Napa Valley College. So I'm very excited, next week is going to be our second one. Um, and again, this is a focus to our up-valley schools. And um, again, expecting about a hundred and fifty, I hope that this is something that we will continue to grow and make part of what NBC does as part of our outreach. This might be because they're grassroots, because it's literally bringing them out here. Um, but that human connection with our young people and the, the, the staff is so critical. And when we can shake their hands and tell them, please come to Napa Valley College, we want you here, it makes all the difference. So very excited about that, um, and creating those pipelines. So I'm hoping to scroll down. The next activity I want to highlight. The next activity I want to highlight, that some of you were, were at, which we were, was very excited to see there, is our uh Viva Mariachi uh festival that we had on April first. So as you know, we, we have been talking about this, I think almost at every board meeting since probably October. Um, and we invited three, three groups from um the West Coast to come to Napa Valley College. We had over, about close to eight hundred people attend this activity, two, two, two events, one in the, in the morning, one in the, or in the afternoon, one in the evening. Um, and it really was an opportunity, as you can see there, to celebrate the beauty of the richness of mariachi while supporting student success, right? So how do we engage mariachi, uh music? Um, it's really impacts student success, and then what do we do from here? So what's the next step? Is um how do we grow our own program in the valley, right, to, to really um promote mariachi music? Um, cultural experience while, while really supporting student success. So it was a great, to that, if you can scroll down to the next um slide. So you go on, there you go. I wanted to show some of the pictures of the, the musicians. So I want to state that these, these mariachis are professional mariachis, but they're literally from our school, from school. So you'll see the, the mariachis in gray. These are our high school students. Um, from, from Santa Rosa, uh mariachi cantadas de mi tierra. We also have up in, in the corner, mariachi de la plan, which is from UCLA. So they were, they're a pretty powerful group. And then the one in the corner is mariachi los gavilan, gavilanes, from um middle schools. They're from middle school in Las Vegas. So this is all about young people really showing their art and demonstrating what the, the power of mariachi music can do for them. If you participate or you're active activity, I think you can attest to the power of their music and this beautiful uh movie. Uh, we can spread out to the next um, next slide. Here's some just pictures of them in action there. Um. Go to the next one. We've got some great coverage, you know, have to register around this, so I wanted to just highlight that and lift that up as well. Just some general feedback from attendees, all positive, right, around this really powerful experience for um our community, for our students. Um, I can tell you that educators in the community are asking, what's next? How can we, how can we develop mariachi um in the valley? How can you start offering these classes in Napa Valley College or, or how do we take it from there? So I'm really interested in growing that. Um, and we're, we actually have a couple of meetings set up to have more conversations about that. I wanted to go ahead and pass out to you. Um, if you weren't able to pick it, the, the program from the um mariachi activities, so you can have. Please save the date, April sixth, twenty twenty four, it'll be on the calendar. We're gonna have our fourth, so. Um, and then special thanks to everybody that just listed up there for their participation um in the activity. So we'll go and scroll to the next one. Yeah, well, my last one. This is my last one. So also want to uh remind everybody that we will be having our commencement this year at Napa Memorial Stadium like we did last year. Uh, another amazing opportunity, so please save the date for that, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Um, that, that, that concludes my report.
Dr. Gar, I can't beat that. So I'll just point out just a few items uh on my report and refer you to my written report. Um, institute, excuse me, institutional technology report. Uh, we are making some progress, we're receiving new devices, and they'll be placed in front of students and faculty uh very soon. Uh, we did talk about uh um, uh looking at IT and how best to address uh the investments in IT that we need to make, both in terms of hardware, but in terms of staffing and management. And we are looking at some, some solutions that will help advance the institution in that regard. We spoke about bookstore services. I just didn't, did want to give you a, a housing update. We are, despite the rain, we are moving to the fourth floor in building one. You can see what we're making, they're moving very, very well, and, and we're very optimistic about the schedule in spite of the rain. We do have a link on there, you can follow the construction of the project uh minute by minute. Uh, Trustee Iverson, I know you do that. Uh, um, but uh it's an exciting prospect, and I encourage you to uh keep an eye on that. I would also offer, we'll have a very extensive report in uh June on the housing initiative, both from our project manager, the Bowles Company, and from our internal implementation team, followed by a walking tour of the site in, in progress. So I would invite uh our board members and interested others to um to join us on that, and I'll send you information so we have enough hard hats and, and vests. So at that, I will conclude my report and turn it over to VP Charles.
Well, good afternoon, and I am very excited to share what I did at the top of the month on April Fool's Day. This picture here, her name is Savannah Petri. She is one of the members of our HR team. She was also the assistant chef for our um cooking school up at Upper Valley. And now she is a member of my department as an HR technician, and she's the one that manages all of our part-time hourlies as well as screening for minimum calls. But what many people don't know is that she has sixteen years of military experience, eight years active, and she's currently at her eighth year as a um air force reservist. And she serves as a non-commission officer in charge. I said, ooh, I wish I could give you a comparable title. Um, but they still use personnel, and we don't do that. So she nominated me as um, as her supervisor for a program that the um air force base um has, and it's called Boss Lift, Boss, Boss Lift, if you can go to the next slide. And I started my morning very early because the military obviously likes to start very early. And as soon as I got there, they fed me and began giving me certificates and thanking me for just respecting and honoring the work that the reservists do. And I was in good company of a room of other employers. And what made me feel really proud is one of the coordinators approached me and said, Napa Valley is back! And I was like, oh, and he started naming, obviously, it's been a while, but he started naming, and we have been in this space before, supporting our reservists. And I felt so proud to be in that space. If you can, um, go to the next slide. But this is what I'm really, this is a lifetime experience for me. I got to go on the C seventeen. The boom operator shared with me that this is the actual plane where in the media you saw when we went to um get folks out of Afghanistan, that's the plane that was used when you saw people trying to get on. And so I'm, I'm in the plane as they're sharing this with me, and I'm like, oh my goodness. If you look in the middle, the picture in the middle, the jacket that I'm wearing is my dad's jacket, who was a sergeant in the air force base. And I lost my dad fourteen years ago, and I said, um, you're coming with me, Dad, you're coming with me. And what was so good is everyone recognized the jacket and the error. Um, the pilots were incredible. I learned a lot about, you know, what they do during their off time, if you will, and there is no off time. Um, he is an up-and-coming pilot, the female pilot, which I do not have a picture showing here, actually flies for a commercial airline, it has been for, I think she says seventeen years. And what you see in the last picture is up in the cockpit, that's the picture from the cockpit looking back into the, the plane. I got an opportunity to sit in the cockpit twice. One, while we were in the air on our way to Crater Lake. And then I got to sit in the cockpit the second time as we were landing. I, when I say a lifetime experience, I have to really thank Savannah Petri for nominating me, and I have to thank Travis Air Force Base for recognizing Napa Valley College. But me personally, I am forever grateful for an unforgettable experience. Now, why do I share this here? Because as a supervisor, the first time Savannah went on leave, she went to Hawaii. Now, I have to tell you, as a supervisor, you hear, oh, I'm going on leave to, to Hawaii. Things were going in my mind, but after that day of spending there and seeing her, her office and hearing the testimony and the stories and really understanding, they're not going on vacation. They're leaving us to go do other work. And oftentimes, it's way more challenging than the work that they're leaving behind. And when they finish their assignments, they don't get a day off. They come right back into our workplace. And so I just want to honor all active military, men and women, as well as all reservists, men and women, and thank them for all of their service to our country. It is important work, often dangerous work, but important work, and we're sitting here because of their dedication. Um, next slide. Currently, we are, see, I go from all of that, to, these are the um positions that we currently have open, and they're in varying degrees of recruitment. Um, so I just want to point out that we are hiring four classified positions, four administrative confidential position and one executive position. They are all in different stages of the recruitment process. Um, this is primarily out of need of um positions that became available through um uh attrition, and, and then also because of um restructuring and the SERP as well. The next slide, please. Board of trustees, I really hope to see you tomorrow at our classified appreciation lunch. This has definitely been a labor of love, and I love, love, love putting this on every year. Unfortunately, the past two years, we have not been able to put on the lunch um because of COVID and the pandemic and the restrictions. But this year, we're proud to say, not only have we put on the lunch, but every single day this week, every office have worked very hard to provide um some type of event for, to show our appreciation to classified um professionals. On Monday, the um business office, along with our administrative confidential senate, showered them with, not literally shower, maybe I shouldn't say that, um served them coffee and pastries out of our cafe. On Tuesday, the students from HCTM two fifty, the advanced culinary class. I have to thank Chantel Rigel, and I have to thank Senior Dean Doug Marriott for working with the students in that class who prepared all of the delicious burritos. And I'm not talking about those skinny little burritos that you get at Taco Bell, I'm about, these things were thick. Like, we were feeding folks, and they were absolutely delicious. So these opportunities, it's not just about, you know, going outside and getting resources, and as we use resources right here, the talents of our students, and I really have to compliment the talent of those students because they were delicious. Um, on Wednesday, Dr. Powell um hosted an ice cream um event. And then today, Dr. Garetto, um, you hosted popcorn with a variety of different flavorings, but I still say the regular butter popcorn was the best. Oh, it was delicious. Um, but tomorrow is a really important day because the individuals that we recognize, we will also again recognize them tomorrow. Um, but I do want to take a moment to thank everyone because this is a, uh, these events, particularly the lunch, are all run by donations. And so I know there's some institutional memory walking out the door with a lot of folks retiring. But for those who are new to our community, every year, the classified appreciation is put together by the love and support of our Napa Valley College community. And I'd like to thank the numerous donors of our Napa Valley College community, including our senates, as well as Skyline Park, um, our faculty association. And I want to just acknowledge, we have a very generous donation by retired mathematics professor, Chris Partit. I just want to say, Chris, if you are listening, thank you, because you really saved us this year. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I also would like to let you know that the donations are still open, and we're still looking for donations um that will be used to complete um, uh, support for this year as well as next year um event. And then last, lastly, we have our retirement celebration. We have a lot of good people with some great knowledge and skill set walking out the door. And we would like to take a moment to honor all of those who are retiring um at our May twentieth third celebration from five, five to six thirty. This will be held in this courtyard right behind the boardroom or outside of the president's office. And that, my friends, I'll sit here and dream of my time on the C seventeen. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Um, I just have two quick things. Uh, this past Tuesday, a couple of days ago, we were able to host a workforce summit. Uh, great partnership and collaboration with the North Bay Workforce Alliance, and want to say thank you to Jerry Hansen and Dr. Marriott for their work in putting that together. Um, I had the chance to serve as a panelist on that. It was a, a very productive conversation where we actually reviewed uh information from the latest uh economic workforce development analysis for the region. And it's uh really a springboard for some subsequent conversations around how we can continue to serve the region uh with our career education programs and ways that we can continue to grow in that space uh to really provide opportunities for our students and for our region. So uh, thank you for those involved with that. Uh, Charles was gonna give a shout out for classified appreciation week, you did most of that for me. I will just add to that, um, I want to acknowledge my, my deep appreciation continuously for the work that our classified professionals do uh here on this campus. They really uh are the backbone in, in many ways, uh, the folks that sometimes go unheralded, that, that support our organization and make all of these things possible for our students. So thank you for your contributions on this week, your weekend. I look forward to, to serving you lunch tomorrow. I promise I'll wear gloves um tomorrow during the classified appreciation lunch. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to standing committee uh reports. Uh, a little report from DOS tonight, is there anything, anything else to address here? Okay. Vidiculture and Winery Foundation Board of Directors, trustee Rios. Okay, nothing to report from audit and finance nor real property. McPherson, distinguished award, I think there is a.
Yes, um, so we met a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was, uh, Dr. Mora, and we chose a winner for the McPherson Award. Um, Janet Stickman is the winner. She is uh humanities and ethnic studies um professor. Um, and she's a, a huge advocate for students uh and their success. She really empowers the students that was clear in reading the nominations um as well as a mentor for um other faculty. So it was really inspiring. Um, she won by, you know, the, all the nominees were amazing, but she, she was a clear winner. So we are um still in the planning process for the um, the luncheon. Right now, I think it's scheduled or on hold for May fourth, um, from twelve thirty to two. And we are going to have that luncheon in the glade, in the glade. So more information coming soon.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see here, Ed Shank Award, trustee Kishanov.
Yeah, we had our first meeting on April eleventh, and we were schooled on the nomination process, pun intended. The deadline for nominees was April fourteenth. We've received eight nominations, and we are in the reviewing process now. And we'll be meeting this, next Monday to determine a winner, and the winner will be announced on May first.
Great. I think we heard a nice report from the foundation, and the foundation has a, a board meeting next week. And, and that's it, a report from the foundation for future agenda item requests. Trustee Luna.
I wanted to um possibly add, talking about um the conferences that we go to. I know we always make it a habit to go to the January um conference, but I'm not sure that that's the best um use of the resources because it is, it is primarily for new trustees. Um, it would be great if we could, you know, go to an annual conference, which is coming up in May. Um, there's also a, a good one in, I think, November. Usually, the, the, that is a more broad um curriculum, I guess, and, and offerings, and um a lot more, um, I guess, tenured trustees uh attend because it's for everybody, and it's really geared towards um either specific topics or um or just like continued learning for trustees. So I just uh would like to look at the budget that we have and, and um just maybe a process of selecting something that we can all go to. Usually, there, there's at least one other good um conference we can go to in our area, so it wouldn't be a lot of trouble, time or um funds.
Is that agenda item, is it, do we? I'm just trying to think, or is it just kind of a conversation, uh, Dr. Powell, I think that your leadership and kind of looking and maybe you guys working together and seeing what we have?
I'm just trying to think, or is it just kind of a conversation, uh, Dr. Powell, I think, your leadership and kind of looking, and maybe you guys working together and seeing what we have?
Yeah, I think it would make a great discussion topic at our retreat coming up. You know, we have that coming up on the first week of June, I believe.
I like that idea too. Yeah, and maybe trustee Luna, you can put everything out in terms of everything that's out there, in light of your resources, just so we have a good uh, sounding board, I think, to, to see everything that's uh, available. Be good? And maybe uh, understanding exactly how much costs, because I, I agree, I know what you mean, like the, the cost is, so maybe it doesn't make sense for like seven of us to go, but maybe you and me go to this one next year, and then trustee Iverson, trustee Baker goes to that one the following year or something like that. We can kind of spread around the resources that way and still get a lot out of it. Any other?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Um, then we will move to trustee and board chair reports. I'm gonna lead off this, and my report starts really with a thank you to our student trustee, uh, Jorge Alejandro Martinez. This is your last meeting, I think. And so I, so I wanted to give you some love for, I mean, I know it's been a really, I think, a, a tough semester with you, and then last, last uh, semester as well, where you've had a lot of conflicts, but you appreciate your time and dedication and, and thoughtful input. And uh, I know I speak on behalf of uh, all of your colleagues on the board, that anything that you need, resource, letter of recommendation, whatever you need, we're here to uh, support you. We're wishing you all the best, and we appreciate everything that you've done to, to support um, the district and your time here. So, thank you.
And I'll be here uh, next month as well, my last, last meeting.
Okay, so that's your last, last meeting?
Yes.
Well, I have an opportunity to say again, I'll go even further.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll be here on May.
Do you have anything to report? Or maybe I'll move down from you and then to, to trustee Kishneff.
So for another to report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Kishneff.
Um, I attended Dr. Powell's welcome event. There was a pretty great turnout there. And on, on April first, I attended the Viva Mariachi, which was wonderful. I was really, really impressed, especially by the middle school group, which was far better than I would have expected. Middle school group play. Uh, I was, I was pretty blown away by that. So um, thank you, Dr. Gero, for putting that together. And a couple of days ago, on Tuesday, I attended the job fair here at the campus. Um, and that was a really wonderful event. I want to thank Dr. Sherri Tennyson for putting that together. There was over a hundred employers there, I'm told. And a huge, huge turnout, and it was a really great event to have here. I think, you know, it's great that we have that for students.
Thank you, trustee Rios.
I just have to apologize. I missed the mariachi, and I, I know that uh, trustee De Luna was going to sing, so I'm wondering if there's any video, you know, recording.
It did a really good job emceeing, was uh, at least in that, I, I know she was emceeing the union one, but Jennifer Aguayo. Yeah, she did like a great job, I thought.
Jenny, Jennifer Aguayo, um, our professor of mathematics and Omar Pena.
Yeah, Omar did, yeah.
Their specialist, uh, they did, yes, they, they did.
They had like a good, like little report going on. It was a, it was very good. Yeah, yeah. Uh, trustee Baker.
Uh, I also briefly attended Dr. Powell's welcome event, um, and was sorry to also miss the mariachi event. I'm very happy to hear that next year's is not during spring break. Um, I was actually um, on the East Coast that weekend uh, at the National League of Cities. I was there um, participating in the Real Institute, which is racial equity and leadership. And uh, part of the, part of the reason I was there is that our city was right, being recognized for a program series that I mentioned a couple of months ago um, that we're repeating next week. It's the, we're calling it Vibe Check, which is values, um, inclusivity, belonging, and equity. And next week, we're gonna be talking about in, civic engagement. So if any of you would like to join me uh, Wednesday evening at seven PM at Benicia Library, would love to see you. Also, next week happens to be National Library Week. So happy National Library Week. Uh, we are gonna be celebrating big time next week, and so if you come down on Wednesday, you will see me in costume. Uh, the whole theme next week is, uh, for, for all of our libraries across the country is there's more to the story, because libraries aren't just about reading books. We're about a lot more than that. It's not just finding your next story, it's also helping people discover and share their own stories. Um, finally, just to, as we're wrapping up uh, our academic year and ramping up celebrations, um, my kiddo, okay, was home last week and went to prom, and as I was uh, grilling him the next day, found out that he was another person that was at prom that was part of his friend group, was someone named Maya? So I was like, he said, yeah, she lives in that house next to the flagpole. I was like, yeah, we talked about the flagpole. So anyway, uh, so prom uh, is, you know, it, it, that was, I was like, I know who that is. Uh, just also FYI, another celebratory event that's gonna be coming up very soon is uh, Napa Grad Night, uh, which we host here on campus. It will actually be the same night as our June meeting, so if any of you wanna get a little extra coffee uh, during our meeting, and then wanna follow me over there and volunteer, it's actually a lot of fun. So I would love to have you all join me in uh, the biggest party that Napa's seen this year.
Trustee Luna.
Just echoing all the comments about you, mariachi was awesome. I sat next to uh, trustee Iverson and his beautiful children. Um, and I, I'm pretty sure somebody heard me singing, and there was a lot of singing going on. Um, it was a great event. I think it's always great to have events like that where you really see like all the, the old families and just um, all my family was there and just friends that, you know, just loved the, the music, the stage presence, and some of those kids was incredible. I, I think we really, you know, I kind of was hoping I could get some autographs now while they're, while they're little and not charging. Um, but yeah, they, it's just, it's a wonderful event, inspiring for students. I, I heard from a lot of community members. Um, I think, I don't remember which mariachi it was that went to some of the school, one of the schools. Um, but the, the comments I heard were just incredible. So I, I really look forward to trying to implement a program like that here and throughout our county, 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 county.
Trustee Iverson.
I don't know if I can beat that. Attended the mariachi and then uh, Dr. Powell's welcome, but really my report is, Dr. Mora, you're a breath of fresh air. That was, I love your energy and welcome to the team, and I love this time of year, and I feel really good about the direction. Wow, I'm gonna miss you. But I, I do get to see you again often, so uh, thanks to everybody at the college, so that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Olson.
Yes, um, as many of us here, I attended uh, Dr. Powell's welcome event, which is really heartwarming and special, um, as well as mariachi festival, which was super inspiring and moving. I just want to say that it makes me really proud to be part of this college community, because we talk about the cultural diversity that we want to promote and live, and we don't just talk about it, we walk the talk. Uh, it makes me really proud to be a part of that. So thank you. Um, and then I want to say that my team at Mentis, where I work in the day, uh, um, several weeks ago, trained NBC's care team in evidence-based QPR suicide prevention. Um, it's really inspiring, um, because we heard a lot of stories about how they do care for our students when it comes to mental health and crises. Um, and they all, you know, we're super thankful for us coming in and delivering this. They gave us a hundred percent scores on um, feeling like they have new skills and confidence to um, support somebody in crisis on campus. And so we're looking forward to training um, more campus members, um, including students. I believe we have a, a training coming up for students um, next month. So um, looking forward to doing more of that to support the college community. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Olson. Our next regular meeting is uh, May eighteen. And uh, would sign off this meeting in remembrance of uh, Judge Philip Champlin, who uh, passed away a couple of months ago, but I was, I was actually just reminded, he was on the um, board of trustees for ten years. I think he was on the foundation board for fifteen plus years. He's a, uh, his wife lived right around the corner from me, so he was on the Napa County Superior Court bench for, uh, over twenty years, Raphael probably.
Yeah, practiced in front of him. He was a wonderful person.
Yeah.
I mean, he was a great judge, but he was a, a, a better person.
Yeah, and a huge, huge supporter of the college too, um, throughout his time on the bench. I was, you know, reminded of that too, because I went, there's a wife, they were having a little garage sale afterwards, I pulled up and I got like some really cool, I forgot, it's left in my car, but some cool uh, college memorabilia that they, uh, that they gave me that wasn't available for the garage sale, but they said, oh, you know, yes, we want you to have this, you would want you to have this, and so on. So I'll, I'll show that off uh, next meeting. So thanks, everyone, and have a good night. We'll adjourn at uh, eight uh, thirty-three PM.